Welcome everybody to this month's State Council meeting. On the call speed, no order. We also have an indication to play allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the state. We thank you for this opportunity. We ask you to look up the mayor and council and citizens of God. Be in our hearts and minds and make decisions just pleasingly on your side for the citizens of this community. God bless America. Thank you to Jesus and the great Lord.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have two amendments for the agenda tonight. One is considered approved signing waiver from the order certificate appropriateness requirement. That's what we put Carter's gas station. Also, we should have a grow initiative. She here tonight?
I'm here.
Okay. It's going to be to consider to approve allowing grow initiative to utilize city owned properties.
Mayor, I got my whole proposal if you see what I need to see it while we discuss.
Okay, we also want to add for executive session we had personnel because that was not available. It was just the potential location for the state. All favor of approval, Jim? Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chance, y'all give a sigh. Consideration approved of minutes from four eight twenty five public hearing at regular meeting.
Oh, hang on just a second. They need to, we need to change them for out of DNF and a new business to reflect the no vote. And there's also no second listed. This has me making the motion for the trash things again. Has me making the motion to approve, you know, the sixteen dollar reduced rate, the five dollar reduced rate. It doesn't have the second and it also did not reflect to the no vote was. I think, was it you or Ben Wester responded to that and said that it's not unanimous, it has to be listed out?
Yeah, that was, I did not respond. That was a question.
If there's a, if the vote's not unanimous, it has to be listed out. It's two voted out.
We voted the A's and we voted the B's.
Do you know your second?
I don't know.
The lower ring, the trash.
I did not recall.
No, I looked back. We did it for the last month, last month. Some of us made a different meeting.
Alright, with those changes, did anybody approve the minutes? Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chance, they want their sigh. Report reports through staff and committee, police department, chiefs, Lundy.
Monday, October four, April twenty five, we had eight calls of service. We had fourteen incident reports and one accident report. Something on the state reports. One arrest, twenty citations, sixteen dollars, and six, first six traps. Eighteen hundred hours, nineteen hundred hours. What you can see down there, what y'all always ask me about, the next block, of course, was up again. Just at that time. Uh, Monday notice. All remodeling at the police department is not complete, which is outstanding. It was really good. I encourage everyone else to come out and look. Bob is been done and it is outstanding. Got new badges on the doors and. With that, we also had a part timer. His name is Ashton Taylor. He works for Little Devil PD. These are part timers. And also tonight, I want to present y'all to new officers of the God's department that hired as of yesterday. Y'all will stand forward. On the right, we have Anthony Delato. He's got fourteen years of experience. And on the left, we have Nathan Pope. He has three years of office experience. And I would like to welcome to God's department. We still intend to do another one on Monday, and y'all will hear about that in the next one.
Thanks, sir. Alright, our partner, Chief Hunter.
We look up April, tell you why we're in five, five hundred and ten halls, which is pretty, pretty horrible. With this guidance, we had around thirty calls, which are dealing with going without. We didn't have two structural faults. One was cooking incident. We had one that was actually clearly significant damage to the structure. And we'll be able to fix it, but I'll see if I can work straight to there. Otherwise, the team was on voter brief appointments, up on forums, and brief other systems.
Uh, plans on industrial development, Mr. Lon, morning.
Good evening, everyone. So, PNC, has, hasn't been anything on the agenda? Well, with the industrial development, of course, you see, I can't, I've been building it. If you are soliciting, if anyone put it out there again, and one wanted to lease the office space, to contact the industrial development office to do so. Hopefully by September, October, we'd be occupied and built. Also, we're going to have a job fair coming up in June, June the tenth. So again, there'll be some announcements on the industrial development website. And also a future announcement within the next couple of months, of course, limited to share that, but again, benefit to that and, um, for, for more jobs. So, Hyundai plan is doing their thing. Of course, they're doing tours now at the stand. A lot of groups going on their tours. Hopefully we'll get to a house was canceled due to the weather and everything, so it's got to be scheduled to tour against that and that's, that's. But other than that, that's, that's all we have at this time. Any questions?
Thanks, sir. Uh, Ms. Powell, Central Commission, she.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This dark preservation committee met, we didn't have a forum, so we could not vote on anything, but we had some split ideas to come forward. So, we're hoping that we will be able to get enough people on this committee to have official meetings. But one of the things that's already scheduled is the corner ice and chalk festival that will be held on June twelfth at the Caboose in the sidewalk. Last year, we had over two hundred participants, so we're asking you, please help us raise the word to get our young people. And if some of you old people think you can get down on the sidewalk to draw, please come out and enjoy with us. Thank you. Oh, aren't there any questions?
Uh, Chief, you up?
Yes, um, mayor, and citizens, I, I want to add this, mayor, I forgot to mention, but I want to say, put this on record. We want to thank the city of Springfield for allowing Chief Woodcock to come in and assist us when corporate employees on vacation by working school resources. But I want to make sure that that's put on record. We do appreciate them for doing that at no cost.
Uh, moving on to leisure services, Ms. Keith Brooks.
Good evening, everybody. The leisure service commission have never happened to before that active bando is getting bigger instead of going better. The zoomer is going exceptionally well. Um, the count is increasing, and I suspect it will continue to increase more with school being out, and this is a good thing. The leisure service commission will be muted on next Thursday. At that time, we will completely cancel for the rest of the year. But bingo schedule will be working on two activities for the, for the youth during the summer. And also, we will make sure we have the packet completed, uh, the community picnic in July. Are there any questions?
What day it don't mean?
Thursday, um, twelve, right after bingo, bingo is at eleven. And from this going on, all, whenever we have bingo, that is also a set work thing, when we make sure that we all are there, um, getting things in line for the picnic. Y'all have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, it's good to see you.
Library Board, Mr. Odom. Uh, downtown development, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Everyone else up here? Uh, three quick things. Uh, first thing is the update on the beside grants. Uh, we officially have six approved, and we have one that is continually approved. It was continually approved based on getting some renderings of what they want to do with that beside. They want to do some, some window dressings. And so we wanted to see if we didn't want it to be just something that would just be a high score downtown. So that's moving well. Uh, I got a couple more hoping it works as well. Uh, another big project we are working on, um, I can't remember what I mentioned this before, but we want to put planters, the planters out from city hall all the way down to the boats and bullets. Uh, we talked with someone today, we, uh, we asked them, so I'll be sharing more about that later. There's some really nice ones that, uh, heavy, that won't be blown away by a storm, but at the same time, it'd be easy to maintain as far as, uh, the greenery that's in it. So, there's something that really gives more uniformity, some more purification to the cities downtown. And the last thing, uh, hope all of you have seen the Foodie Friday flyers, the Foodie Friday betrayal flyers. It's going to be a really great event. Uh, we have the mural dedication included in that. We have a sign that will go up and will be generated, stated that it is commissioned. Just talking a little bit about it. Uh, we have several food trucks already lined up. Uh, have several food vendors that will be there. We have a DJ on site playing some music, keeping things live. We have a jumping house. Something very interesting that I've never done before that I'm looking forward to, there's actually an axe throwing mobile truck. I don't know about anyone else, but I've always wanted to participate in that. You know, my daddy used to make, he chopped wood back in the day. I've never got to throw on it, so. I'll be throwing an axe this Friday, so I, I contacted him and said he'd be glad to be here, so we're looking at having some great things, some other things for the kids, face painting. Corner ice will be free for children under twelve, so just something that's really, want to bring the family together, have a great time. Some more news, actually should be running an article probably either tomorrow or the day after Thursday, I mean, tomorrow, Thursday regarding events, just what is going on in the city of Godie downtown and business development where we go. So, good press is always a good press, right? So, uh, and that's pretty much it. Oh, I will ask one thing. Uh, I think, uh, I'm not saying the mayor will not be here, so I want to ask one of the city council members to exit. Official ribbon cutting of the mural. So if one of you decide, I don't know if you will.
Financial portion or? Right.
Six to eight, yeah, that's, uh, it's going to be from six to eight. We start, you know, we start setting up at five thirty, but the event starts at six. We probably will not do the actual dedication and ribbon cutting until about six thirtyish, I think, so. So, everybody's walking, that's putting everybody here. If you hadn't seen it yet, come out, have a great time, some great food, some great fun, and let's, let's get that good old time feeling get back to the city of Godie. If you have any questions about it, visit, um, our Facebook page, the D D six four pages on the city's page, and I think other pages on Facebook is copied as well, so. Y'all have any questions, anything?
Watches.
Yes.
Are there a little? Into the axe properties.
Right by the doors. Who we looking at doing? I didn't, I should have elaborated, but we're looking at possibly putting, uh, I think, two axes each door. Going all the way down that which, no more. We thought about setting them back, but I know that might be a transportation issue against the building. Shouldn't be a problem at all.
Who are our main catering?
Uh, we actually possibly looking at, I, I never knew this until the other day, but there's a, the installer who's going to install it for, I think, a very small additional fee. We check into it. They actually have, what do they call them? I want to say nursery nannies, but they actually come out of maintaining water, make sure they don't fall apart. If that doesn't work out, it's more expensive than we want to look at budget wise, then we have to come up with another option. But they're going to be, we're looking at not really, it's going to be more greenery, so it's not something that, like flowers that really need some serious watering, where to dial, it doesn't need the water that it needs. Any other questions?
Please, sir.
Alright.
Uh, just give her, you know, um, Bob, John, that's her. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, for the month of April, the city treated eleven point six million gallons of water utilizing fifty-four percent of permit capacity. Treated, uh, three point nine million gallons of wastewater utilizing ninety percent of permit capacity. Water sewer department responded to full water sewer leaks, two sewer blockages, completed two corrective lift station work orders, and completed five corrective wastewater treatment plant work orders.
Equipment. And, uh, they're parking those back at five oh five, man, only speaking, they not open three thirty every day.
That, I'm not sure. I would have to get with the office and make sure they did do that. That's what they, they need to do.
Alright. You know, I had discussions with Josh about that. He's, he's a leader of the chicken.
Okay. We want to general government, uh, first thing is to discuss water tower repairs located at western floor of our. We need to do something with the water tower. Y'all have any ideas we need to do with it?
I have spoken, Mr. Man, I have spoken with some folks about that we, uh, remove it and put a new tower up there. Don't just throw it away, put it on one of the lots we got there, cut it out to a different size, so it'd be lower, put a floor in it, just to do that, just start, little top back on it, because you start the painting.
And put the new tower up?
Yes, yes, with the tower, but put that on one of the base lots we have over there, so we can have that for the start piece.
Or we have the entries on there.
Approved.
Okay.
Yeah, we received two hundred thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars of savings.
See that number here?
Two hundred thousand, six forty-four seventy.
That's just to put the top on?
Yes.
That's just to put the top on? Come on up.
Hello. Be in a part of old, old guy, the new water tower, water, will it be visible when we try to? When you come through town, you can see the sign that says God.
I think the thought process is to basically use the same location and put a new tower up. Later on, way down the road, if we got to do more, less site of the city, we might have to look at another location for our new tower. But we, that one, we want to keep the top there.
Okay, but it will be visible.
It'll be painted too.
Thank you.
It's a well out there. We don't have to really do it for a while.
Anybody in public have a pension on this fourth hour? Alright, um, let's, this is kind of throwing it out there. It doesn't need to vote or anything. We'll move on to the next part, discuss the need for performance of the library board. Uh, Mr. Odom, his two year is coming up. He is not really doing, um, his term. So we need to find somebody to be on the library board. So if anybody here wants to be on the library board? Well, that's not known.
Really excited about that.
He is. I already moved him, I'm not sure. Yeah. Uh, so that's open too, so if anybody knows, anybody wants to be on the library board, that's, that's a two year term. Also, historical preservation committee, we need to get people on that too.
That's desperately, we don't have enough members around out of all the core, we only have two members, maybe at least three.
Um, just got a public hearing from the city of Godie twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We got to have two, two before June, oh, July, sorry. Planning on, planning on doing the first reading, we got the June reading. Y'all get y'all's calendars and looks, he will be good for a special call meeting. Uh, in, in June itself, so. Anything after the tenth is going to be fine.
You want to do it the next Tuesday? Everybody for the next Tuesday?
If we're going to do two, I recommend seven days tomorrow. Have the other one on the seventeenth.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so y'all available on the seventeenth? Yeah. Do the sixth, partner?
Hello. Hello.
Alright, come on to the front.
Now, I just wanted to remind you all, that's election day. We just, some of us just finished training.
On seventeen?
This election. Of the president. Yes. It's just, um, hold it something.
Prime year.
Oh, vote utilities commission.
Yeah, it's, it's.
For the first time since in the last five years.
We just, we, a lot, a lot of us were spinning strips of this election. And I would, I would like to be able to attend that very, very much.
But you would want, uh, it could be anytime of the week, I guess.
I'll be out of town the rest of the week. I mean, y'all need me here going for. I can do the.
No, I'm twenty-four.
I mean, y'all really, it's fine.
Want to be out.
You out, you want to be here?
I will be here for, I shouldn't, I'm, I'll be out of town on vacation, I'll be on vacation that weekend.
Can't you go late?
Depends on the basketball schedule, because that's, that's a basketball tournament, they're big one night, so I don't got no control over that.
Councilman, I could look into.
I mean, as long as we have enough people here for, to approve, vote and approve on it, it's fine. I mean, if I, I guess, I could, I mean, if you, probably do a man or something.
Oh, yeah, well, there's, there's a, there's a way you can do this.
I mean. I mean, I'll, I'll be, I'll take a vote or anything.
Mr. City Clerk, you make note, uh, only tenth, June tenth, and June eighteenth, um, six o'clock here, and then you do that out into the newspaper.
Yeah, we have to advertise it minimum fourteen days prior to that first hearing, so it's also going to get the ad out for a month.
That's going to be every general, government, uh, old business. This is second reading, consideration to approve the IGA with Epping County to conduct municipal elections. We have election this year for, uh, council, two councils, and Epping County has always done our, uh, elections here in the last few months, I think. We got a lot, first reading last month, this is the second reading. So I will, any public comment on that? Alright, I entertain motion to approve the IGA with Epping County to conduct municipal elections. Motion by Mr. Hammy, second by Mr. Lee, y'all agree to aye?
Aye.
They're opposed, they're done, motion carries. Uh, item B, we talk about playgrounds, consideration to approve of new playground equipment at the Dyson Old School Park, and the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents. Uh, Mr. Johnson, he comes straight at this line, so it's, you want to pull that up?
The, um, Dyson Old School Park was sitting behind the gym by the PD department. It's missing a lot of equipment. I think we got two sliding doors over there. So, what we, I looked for was, when I look for some swings, merry-go-round, um, monkey bars, another piece, what they call a pole bar, I think it is. So there'll be four new pieces going in there. Besides, we had a new city sign up there as well, new park sign go up there. And what we want to do, if we both to get this equipment in there, close the park down, get it cleaned up, and then do a, do a cut for that park with the new equipment and everything on it, clean it up, and open it back up to the city so the guy can have the playground equipment for toddlers to swing in the swings as well as the older kids as well, all that to go forward. It is voted on tonight, go ahead, spin this, to put that park back into play. And from my lovely boy's house, we do have some benches that we're going to put in there as well, that they built, put a couple of those benches in that park, playground as well. Yes. We will have part of them over there as well.
Yeah, last month I talked about, you know, discussing it at the budget hearing, and we're, from all the documents, we're about three hundred thousand dollars under budget, so. We need more under budget, these are things that we should spend money on. So, I'm for, I'm fine with moving forward with it yet not. I think it's a great idea. Something's desperately needed, so we actually have the money to do it, so. I think it's time to move forward with it.
Alright, so I entertain a motion to approve the new playground equipment at Dyson Old School Park, amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents. Motion by Mr. Chance, seconded by Mr. Lee, y'all agree to aye?
Nice job.
Motion carries.
They have a great part five, citizens in here.
Yeah, that's right.
One, two, three, four, swing.
Yeah. Which one of the, pulling one? Alright, item C is discuss revisions to current personnel policy handbook. Uh, we briefly discussed on that last month. And I think those few provisions have worked, presented to us. Bill, you want to speak on that?
There's some provisions that have been suggested during his review, those that may, uh, the only other thing I got left to do, I need to get with Chief Lundy to get those up to date. S O P for PD, to make sure that handbook's consistent with the S O P for the department. Uh, other than that, it's, uh, any other questions or suggested changes that you want to add?
I didn't have any suggested changes, but I sent Bill and me all the other day, I bought a couple of things. Uh, talks about tuition reimbursement in there. We need to start thinking about setting a dollar amount. Um, Phil had said, you know, setting up something, you say something about, we're going to reimburse it, they need to work it for certain period of time.
The IRS has a maximum, if you have a educational assistance program, the maximum that you can contribute per employee per year is five thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And you can do less than that, and that's the most that you can do if you have a tuition reimbursement policy.
Do we need to decide a number to honor, just kind of be thinking about that, we'll talk to you about that later?
Yeah, we're most likely gonna go down next month, especially tonight, so we're supposed to come along over if you want to think about it.
So could we, since you say like, that would be our max, um?
Right, yeah, because like, I know with Savannah, it's like two thousand, two thousand five hundred that we can get, so, like, if we get something like that here, you know, that would be the maximum a year that you could recruit.
And you can go up to fifty, to fifty, you just can't really be on that. Right, so if we, if we put it out on our, um, website, we show it from one, make sure it says up to.
Yeah, um, I think the plan's gonna be as soon as next month, so we have time to go over everything.
Yeah.
Yep, um.
Once we get the SOPD, once we get straight with that, I'll send that, a clean version, maybe about.
Okay.
Um, and another idea I have, I threw this out there to Bill, um, we have maternity leave in there, and we have, we have maternity leave, I guess would be the best way to do that. And I was, we have, we don't, we have small number of employees, so I don't think it would be that big of a deal, but I would like to, the city to consider offering two weeks of paid maternity leave for a newborn or an adoption.
How does that make sense to people at that?
But not, no, so you wouldn't be using your PTO, the city would just be giving you your, new weeks of your, your salary or pay, you would get two free weeks of pay basically in the city, so you wouldn't get the first two weeks of maternity, of maternity leave. Would be, you wouldn't have to use any of your PTO for that, and then you tend to go, the, the rest of the time you would be using your PTO.
Jay, then they will have the FMLA, something like a FMLA thing.
Yeah, that kicks in once all PTOs are utilized.
Yeah.
Under FMLA, employees, they can get up to twelve weeks unpaid leave for maternity, and for maternity too.
Yeah, so this would just be like the city, we, you could kinda call it like a maternity bonus, like a two-week maternity bonus.
You want hospital?
Um, I mean, I, we only have a small number of employees, so, the, in the grand scheme of things, it's not that big, it's not gonna cost us, cost the city that much money, and I think it would be a good incentive to, you know. Some, I, some employers, you know, more often in the private sector offer, but it is, you know, in today's times, it's hard to, it's hard to find six weeks off from work, especially if you're a female, six weeks is not a lot of time after having a baby, so. I bet, we, I think it would be a good, a nice gesture. You can, it's all paid PTO right now.
Alright. So like I said, we'll put this on next month. I'm just nobody doing that, so. Um, move on to, uh, new business, uh, I have a mass consideration approval, one-year renewal contract with special engineering regarding White Spot, G I S services in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, we've been with White Spot for years now, they have, well, not four hundred dollars, last year it was two dollars, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, they've done very phenomenal work, they did a new website, um, if I had any questions, concerns, comments? Oh, comment, not very popular.
We have four hundred dollars, then four hundred dollars.
Alright, so there's no, uh, no, no other, uh, conversation about that. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the one-year renewal contract with special engineering for thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
My question, Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Lee, y'all agree to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, there's none, motion carries. Uh.
Plus the one I had, when they backed the drill, they were famous too.
Yeah. So you can, I like, I like being able to click on the word on the Facebook, sausage, and all that, so. Uh, item P is consideration to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh four, which is the city guidance ethics pledge, um, I believe this is from the state, if I'm correct on that?
GMA.
GMA, so that's, the wording on there is from GMA.
Yes.
I guess the wording is GMA. So this was directly from GMA, um, I'm not sure if we did this, I don't know if you want to change the, the language or?
There, we said, I think, different on that, um, what?
No, it's, uh, directly from the Georgia Municipal Association, it's just to stay in the, what was it, the?
City methods.
City methods.
Certified city methods, it's their model, basically.
And I believe it's an, it's an annual, by annual, um. But it is, the language is taken directly from the.
Yeah, because I, I was just asking the question where it said that, if you were to assist that mayor and council, that's what it says, they might have just changed that for a lot. You know, look. Normally that's who it is, mayor and council. Even, uh, see like, even if you just start it right here, ethically, mayor and council.
Saying that as a group and as individuals, so, so by passing this, uh, mayor and council, not only the city's going to want you by it, but you.
Any other discussion on that, any public comment? Eric Dunn, I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal for the ethics pledge.
Send it.
Motion by Mr. Hammy.
Say.
Second by Mr. Johnson, y'all agree to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, there are none, motion carries. Uh, consideration, excuse me, consideration to approve opening a bank account for the DDA, uh, currently the DDA does not have its own separate bank account, and with them having a, uh, budget, probably needs to be separated out so they can look at their, their money, basically. Um.
We can discuss this at the retreat anyway, so.
So it's the amount that the entire, that.
Yeah, still get through.
That's it, for sure.
Or say aye. Any other discussion on that, any public comment on the DDA? Right? Alright, I entertain a motion to approve opening a new account for DDA. My question by Mr. Hammy. Second by Mr. Chancey, y'all agree to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, there are none, motion carries. Uh, consideration approved proposal for new code enforcement software, I believe Mr. Hunter is here, you want to pump that up?
So, I got proposals for two separate, uh, upper companies, file permit and, uh, GUT pilot, and so the hope is, you want me to kind of.
That's what you gave us.
Stream on the whole process, so with file permit and also GUT pilot, I can walk in the field without having to come to the office, bring the, the storage, hard files or printing files. I can take photos, take those, adjust photos, and create an entire case for whatever issue is brought up. Uh, I'm not, I'm hundred percent sure on, on GUT pilot, I didn't see this approach I read, with file permit, they wouldn't, excuse, install anything on our website, city website, so there's complaints to be. Stuff happens to send in to, uh, the both of them, you can sit down to me, it would come directly to, uh, whatever software system I have, like, if I had a tablet which was already loaded with words, it would come directly to that site review there. But that would also allow me to say, review complaint, look what it says, and determine if it is in fact what should complain or not. And so if it's a genuine complaint, go ahead, start a case, go out, be able to get it, start a process, it's not a case that is not, you got to use it to create a case by itself. And how it counts, we're due a long time, and any complaints do come in, I can see, kind of allow me to, to map out what parts of the city have all the complaints, need more attention, what parts are, are more stable, and kind of, go there as far as attention. Part of, I'm gonna correct it, the pricing on both of those is same, like the file permit has been more attentive as far as reaching out and making contact, um, and is also willing to adjust pay.
Which one is that?
A file permit, uh, the gentleman that's speaking with him, that he's willing to, able to, uh, kind of, adjust the pricing numbers on it, so it would, uh, kind of help us out with that aspect of it.
So the cloud pay would actually, could develop one to work with?
In my opinion, yes, both of them have the ability to go to other modules, so I guess, you know, if we get a, uh, uh, building spec dedicated to us, we could do the software for that, but a cloud permit is, let's say we get one of six months, after we, we go, go file permit. I can then say, say, hey, it's the same module, just the wording different, I can train them while I'm out in the field showing property, but at the same time, to get their money processed a little bit more, if they give something, go ahead and get to make it with the software set.
And it's also included as part of the code enforcement's budget proposal for July twenty-seventh.
It's already in the budget.
Yes.
Should you decide to, to go ahead with it, it is accounted for next year's budget?
Yes, yeah, and so, current, the current wishes remaining for this year, there is enough in the budget to go ahead and, and approve, I could reach out to the gentleman about it tomorrow, for example, and say, hey, this could go through, and he goes, uh, we started transferring files to evidence, I mean, currently, go ahead and transfer it to the network system, and go for next job. The cases I have in evidence, the twenty-some I have in there now, so go ahead and transfer it so I can progress, huge case to come up as well.
This three-year plan, I'm seeing, good, alright?
Yes.
So you're saying you'd be out there for your motion, you'd be off, right?
Yes, that is the point, so I can be out there even with the community getting to know them.
Alright, it was like getting rid of office, sitting down for a lot, you don't have to have a little talk. Ah, okay. So I, and I like, I like what you say, even, even though, this may be cheaper, but these fellows are willing to work better and have.
I have more contact with them, yes, they, they've called me more. Yeah, I've only spoken with that gentleman probably three or four times, the gentleman has actually reached out to me on multiple occasions, just edge of fence, I can do anything you need, and he's also offered, if y'all wanted to, uh, to do, give y'all demonstration, not just the code enforcement, but also the permitting side. If, you know, uh, the permitting can also be, any other module, the gentleman, he should just move it forward, they can be had on individually, or in tag, or probably, more willing to sit down, give y'all demonstration over that, y'all, whether it be, the, whatever. But that also includes, pricing also includes training on the system itself, and, um, that's file transfer, and they also have a, with, with price fighters, a few folks for the G I S.
Yeah.
Price like that, they also have to deal with price wise as well, so, that's also included, uh, it's the same system that the Lincoln has, so I got their code enforcement, their, those better, go ahead and see the system next, it looks like in person, and like, the other place, very straightforward, very, very good.
Any other questions? Uh, anybody in the public have any questions? Eric Dunn, y'all agree to a motion?
I have a motion to approve the cloud, okay, cloud permit. So move the cloud permit, um, quote. For forty-five hundred, first person here, and then the figure, I'm planning after that.
My question by Mr. Chancey, second by Mr. Johnson, y'all agree to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and none, motion carries.
That forty-five hundred is just, is with the training price included, so drop down to three for the continual years.
Uh, item B, consideration for proposal for the city of Dayton housing needs an amount of fifty-five thousand dollars, um, Mr. Bill, I'll just start with that one, just give everybody the idea of what you're looking at.
Yeah, it's kind of a little thumbnail sketch, um, had the project manager with the Georgia Tech Center for Economic Development Research, uh, reach out to me, uh, she and I had worked together in a couple of other locations in the past. Um, they have done a housing study for Savannah and Chappa County, then the Ford County, Hyundai metal plant area, uh, they're also processing doing a housing study for the city of Pembroke, uh, which is a very strong, but thus, Pembroke, of course, is ground zero for a metal plant. We are just a very close neighbor, um, but still a very similar situation, um, a lot of growth expected in the years to come, and a lot of that is trying to address a critical need right now for particularly workforce housing, with all the jobs that are supposedly coming our way, uh, with the metal plant, and trying to figure out exactly what that looks like, where it should go, uh, ensuring that we have a diverse mix of housing types, and also really concentrate hard on housing affordability, for those that are planning on coming here in the future. So we had the conversation, had a Zoom meeting, I said, just send me a proposal, let's see what it looks like, throw it out there to council for discussion, kind of see where you want to go with it, so that proposal is in your packet there at the very back tonight, um, they are proposing a total cost of that study of fifty-five thousand, uh, which at first glance does sound kind of steep, uh, maybe a little more than I'd be comfortable with right off the bat, however, given Georgia Tech's a public entity, that's probably about as low as that cost is gonna go for something like this, because. In the comprehensive plan, it does address housing, but only in a very thumbnail sketch sort of way, this would obviously be taking more of a deeper dive into that particular topic, a private consultant is gonna cost you way more than fifty-five, depending on where you go with it, and I think you've seen that before with the company, so, you kind of know what you're getting into there price-wise. Talking with the mayor, believe that the county is actually looking at potentially doing a housing study county by, um, if that were to include the municipalities, and hopefully it would, um, I think it would probably be better for us to piggyback off of that, uh, rather than have our own separate study, if there's gonna be one county by anyway, you know, we might as well join in. Obviously, there probably will be some cost share involved, I would expect that, but certainly wouldn't be fifty-five grand, so you'd be getting basically the same product for less money.
I'll add to that, I'm talking to county commissioners, the IGA did a housing study not too long ago, and they basically said that they weren't really a hundred percent happy with them, so they're probably gonna drive them away, so, um, my fault, this right here is just tablebing it now, but, you know, have a discussion, it's fine, Dave.
I think because the county's gonna do it, but the county's spending the money, and we have the, for, for bomb, everyone's doing that, but the county do it.
They got a motion for Mr. Hammy?
Uh, yeah, you can motion, I'll make a motion.
Table.
Table, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I got it, yeah. Whoops.
Yeah. Got a second left?
I have a second.
Uh, there's the aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, there are none, motion carries. Got some dates to remember, oh, sorry, and, um, uh, consider to approve, uh, signing a waiver for partners for the certificate of appropriateness requirement, uh, Mr. Jackson, if y'all mind, I'm gonna speak about that, but you've had a conversation with Mr. Bill. Just to kind of tell us, I'd be able to.
Good evening, everyone.
You go.
Motion. I did, I spoke with Mr. Ross earlier, and Mr. Will, um, regarding a waiver, we're getting ready to, um, uh, have our building plans, uh, run up for submission and submit, and so during that process, we noticed that, um, the need was to get a appropriateness, um, from you guys, and so we're requesting a waiver, um, it appears that there's, um, some steps we need to take, um, to get to, uh, the building plan process. Um, so during that process, um, it, uh, looked like we need a waiver, um, just so you guys know, in requesting that, it does appear we need, uh, for reviewing everything with our architect, we do meet all of the requirements, um, for, uh, architectural guidelines, um, so even though we're requesting the waiver, we would be needing all of the, the guidelines listed in the DDA, um, and I am prepared to talk, um, through any of the, if I have any other questions on those architectural guidelines. Unfortunately, I am not a architect, so, um, you'll have to excuse the, the answers that you may get from, but I am prepared to go through any of those if you have any questions on that. Unfortunately, I am not a architect, so, um, you'll have to excuse the, the answers that you may get from, but I am prepared to go through any of those if you have any questions on that.
Any questions on that?
I'll just add that the, for the standard for, for granting the waiver under that ordinance is that, uh, there's exceptional practical difficulty, the strict application of that section. So, if, uh, the app people fall within that definition, then you're not so, in this case, waiver against, and the waiver also has to be such that the character of the property be preserved. So, uh, she's saying that that's, that's not an issue, um, but still need to kind of fit, meet that exceptional practical difficulty. And here, I think there's not even a form on the, the preservation, so, uh, so that's a consideration too.
So, all those.
So in other words, the history of a site, like, you're saying like, the worst next to the house, next to, they're going to replace all of that, damage to whatever.
No, not necessarily, just as long as the, as long as the characters, it's extremely a, a very subjective standard, but the character of the, of the property must be preserved. And that's not very specific, but, uh, that's what we're saying. Which, but accord, according to, uh, to her, it's going to be more or less the same.
Right, so there is, uh, building materials that are listed out in there, uh, suggested preferential materials, um, you know, exterior's not gliding, you know, we've got solar transponds, something about the trans, um, windows, uh, above the doors, um, corners and added details. And so when the architect went through all that, um, you know, we, we met all of those requirements.
Sounds good, uh, I entertain a motion to approve the waiver certificate of appropriateness requirement of section sixteen dash five of the Guyton City Code, for improvement to real property located at one hundred cents of ballpark.
Send it.
Motion by Mr. Hammy, say my Mr. Lee, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Thank you, we'll get that over to you. Uh. We have somebody with the Grow Initiative here, Mrs. Rosie, is that who? Do you want people to want to appear? We, we have your, uh, paper, we're sort of, I see, do you want to introduce yourself, I mean, what y'all do?
My name is Rosie Anderson, I'm the vacant director and member of Grow Initiative Georgia, we're a local nonprofit organization, we serve low wealth families, non-native English speakers, and individuals with disabilities. We are the only, uh, organization in Georgia, where every member is community health worker certified, meaning that every single one of our team is able to assist the community in mental health for adults and children, in case of crisis, as well, health situation, and we also provide, uh, disability services free of charge to the entire community. We're here hoping that this city of Guyton would like to work with us in creating a grow-led, community-based farmers market, it would be the first of its kind, where we would partner with the city to find local growers and suppliers. We would nurture them and help them grow into successful vendors, successfully implementing the agriculture and the agricultural enterprise. Um, currently, the city of Guyton has, uh, uh, currently the city of Guyton has twenty-three percent household that are limited, that have reported limited access to transportation, and Guyton, along with the town, has a food desert. If anyone knows what a food desert, please feel free to raise your hand, if you like, maybe give you, go to a quick tour of it, I promise I'll make it five seconds from this.
Hold on.
Okay, uh, a food desert is identified by the United States Department of Agriculture as a place where access to food, local, uh, wholesome food is not accessible within ten miles or more. That means that even though we have a lot of farmers in the area, or small growers, not everyone in that community has access to fresh, locally sourced food. Meaning that where we see our, our generals pop up everywhere, a lot of that food is processed. We also know that processed food leads to hypertension, high blood pressure, diabetes, making our insurance rates go up, and our medical bills go up. We are trying to prevent that, we're trying to provide equitable, bilingual, and disability-adapted health education. We currently have a partnership with the Two Rivers Free Health Clinic in Lincoln, where we already provided, and we have shown a successful thirty-seven percent decrease in homelessness and chronic disease. It works, I just need space, and every single one of you to support us.
I think it's a great idea, I'd love to make America healthy again, so you know.
Uh, we have a discussion on.
Okay, discussion first, I'm just.
Uh, my idea, what I like to see, uh, I know we talked about utilizing the gym, too, that, just earlier, but, if we can see how that goes, there's a space across from the fire department, that's a wide open field, basically. And we could utilize that property, um, and possibly put, put in your, uh, bathrooms and, uh, the stuff you need over there, and I think it's close enough for the lock box, you actually set up, it's got security before bathrooms, um.
Across the road is good, good, what do I have?
You got a password?
You're like, oh, you do this, this, this.
Might, might.
Which of course, that's, that's, that's working down the line anyway, um, that, that's kind of my thoughts on that, you know.
And I spoke with the mayor earlier on that, and specifically, if we get our playground together, when the families go to the playground, come right by, and buy the veggies, from that same, cause right in that scene here, so it works out.
That would be great.
Whether you're at the jail now, or in that location, it's, it's, it's on the base on that.
That would be fantastic, the only thing that I would kind of just make sure that we remember is, we do have a lot of individuals with disabilities, and are elderly that are very heat sensitive. It takes, they're not able to process food as much as you're able-bodied person, especially if you're past the age of forty-eight. And those are things that we remember only because we have the heat stroke, and my team just has an entire team, um, certification on heat stroke.
Need top of the staff, top two?
Yes, absolutely, so we are also the only African organization that is able to process Medicaid, SNAP, TANF, and WIC applications onsite, every single one of my team has access to Gateway, which is the application, or the, um, software that allows us to do that. We are able to process that for individuals with disabilities, and anyone that is an eligible resident, that allows us to also implement SNAP Ed. So SNAP Ed is SNAP education, it's a program that's up with the USDA, where we go into the community, provide health and nutrition education, but we also inform constituents how to utilize SNAP to the max benefit. Did you know you can purchase seeds and live plants if you receive SNAP benefits? Bet you did, bet you didn't know there's an entire selection of things that you can grow in your backyard with minimal space. Bet you didn't know that if we teach you how to grow the food, and then we also teach you how to become a vendor, now you're more than likely to gain access to getting off safe benefits. The more you know.
Any other questions? I guess the question that we need to ask is, will we allow, that you start up in the U? Um, how often?
Um, that really would depend on market research, the data that we have from Oregon specifically was showing that once a week, but we would just need to do data research specifically for gotten, because we want to make sure that we take into account the fact that it's grown exponentially, and what those needs are. But ideally, it would be during the week, because we want to make sure that individuals have access to it, it would be in the evenings, to take off some of the heat pressure, and we would be ready to go by the beginning of fall, so right around September, October.
I mean, we got plenty of time to find it out, I mean, I think it's got to end before, but we got, I think it kind of fair, I mean, this is.
Well, I think it's just a, you would need, uh, an okay, then you could get a space, basically.
Right, yeah, okay, then we could.
It's kind of like we did with the, um, the Zooma stuff, we just did some kind of contract like that, and we guarantee the space for a certain date, or, you know, time period.
While I come out today about your Zooma, so Grow would be able to partner with the individuals that facilitate Zooma, so we can do our health and nutrition class onsite, and do it on a weekly basis, so we can take them from where they are now, and increase their chances of purchasing these and all the other things, which every can experience in here.
She does Zoom on Mondays, and she has two other classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
We could do Thursdays, um, Mondays, we teach bilingual, so if you're an English speaker, and you're going to learn Spanish, we offer that free of charge at Two Rivers, and then on Tuesdays, we do that in Chappa County. And we do a lot of youth-based learning speakers. Yeah, it's how we provide inclusive environment and immersion, so you have the English learners, experienced and immersed with English speakers, and you're both learning at the same time. Every single class is individualized, meaning that what you learn in African County is completely different than what you learn in Chappa County.
Alright, I think what we're here to do today is to approve, uh, a space to provide for growth, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Send it.
To, to, to do that, to prove it, I'll have a motion for Mr. Hammy, that's it?
Say.
That's like Mr. Johnson, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here none, motion carries, we'll get that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See Mr. Odom walking, you want to do library stuffs? Come on up.
Well, I have nothing to report.
Say the best words.
But, uh, I would like to take this opportunity, thank the city of Guyton for allowing me to, uh, represent it at the, at the county library, and, uh, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Follow me.
Yeah.
Uh, we want to make sure remember Friday, this Friday is the pretty Friday from six p.m. until eight p.m., that's going to be on the walking trail, um, there's X stolen, you know, watch your heads. Wednesday, May twenty-first is the DDA meeting, that'll be at ten a.m. here, uh, next Thursday, those twenty, twenty-second. It'll be the lead services, uh, meeting, they'll be over there, lead service, remind the D, uh, also on twenty-second is Bingo, from eleven to twelve, um, at File of Magnolia, uh, June tenth will be the next regular city council meeting. Uh, I entertain a motion to vary from the regular meeting until executive session. Motion by Mr. Johnson. Say my Mr. Chancey, all papers aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, soon. We'll, uh, kind of, be back after the next session, so.
Y'all can link any of your comments below. This, this is going to be the, uh, agenda items on, agenda items on.
And I'm wrong.
Wrong agenda.
Agenda items.
Agenda items.
I would, I would have a comment, but I would like to get a copy of.
Well, I'll be on next one, so get a list, alright, sir, I'll get on the list, come on, buddy. Tip, we want things to run around here.
So put it together with, with that, yeah, you want to talk about those? To the door.